I call it the January 2nd, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Richard Helms for the invocation.
Thank you. If you'd care to join us, please bow, please. Dear Heavenly Father, you're indeed the giver of all gifts, and we come together this evening to seek your wisdom and guidance. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in those decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what's right and good for all of our citizens. Help us to make decisions that strive for the good of all and guard us from the blind self-interest. Please give special protection to the military, police, and firemen that risk their lives daily to ensure our safety. Finally, dear Lord, please grant us the humility to always seek you in all that we do and all that we say. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. We will recognize the speakers signed up for informal comments. We have Mr. Frank Capella, Loretta McLendon, and Jen Sanders. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. All right, our first speaker is Frank Capella.
Mr. Chair, I have some maps in the [inaudible] picture there. It's Frank Capella, 3901 Voltaire Drive, and number is 917-922-8783. I'd like to start by saying I'm a resident of the Winding Creek community. We're located on South Potter Road in Wesley Chapel, and I'd like to speak about flooding. I passed along a map and some pictures from a two-and-a-half-inch rainfall event from December 26th. A few years ago, this board voted to allow two high-density developments containing approximately 740 homes to be built in very close proximity to my community. As you can see from the map, one development of 650 homes is directly across from Winding Creek. Winding Creek is the red circle on the map. The other is behind us, other developments, around 90 homes. At the time these projects were considered, I and many others pleaded with the county to understand the issues these projects would have on safety, traffic, stormwater, and flooding. We insisted projects of this size were never designed for an area like ours. Except for Commissioner Richard Helms, the board voted to approve those projects. Fast forward to today, and every one of those predictions from years ago has come to fruition. Stormwater infrastructure has failed. We have systemic flooding, which is now a public safety threat. On your map, you will find the Molly Branch Creek, which flows near all three developments and into the 12 Mile Creek. The new increase in water is causing erosion and flooding problems downstream. Further, the pipe that runs under Potter Road, which is the blue circle on your map, this pipe which takes water from our side of Potter Road to the 12 Mile Creek is far too small to handle this newly created storm water, and now that water is backing up into Winding Creek. Since these projects started, we've had nine incidents of flooding throughout our area. Prior to these projects, the same area could easily handle a two- or three-inch rainfall. I have lived in my home for 17 years. My house or yard never flooded from Hurricane Florence, which dumped nearly 10 inches of rain. Now, a two- or three-inch rainfall threatens homes and roads. So what has changed? I believe Union County badly mishandled flood and stormwater mitigation demands with these projects, and now existing residents are paying the price. Residents are being penalized from the cost of buying flood insurance when it was never needed before. And before these county decisions, our area, because of these county decisions, I should say, our area must now live with this flood threat. An engineer recently asked me, how in the world did these projects even get approved? So whether it's an improvement under Potter Road, a water mitigation enforcement, something must be done. I appreciate this board promising help for Wesley Chapel. I understand a study will be done, but more will be needed. Finally, I'll just leave you with this. If specific warnings about stormwater and flooding weren't properly vetted by the county on behalf of the existing residents, shouldn't the county provide the solution to these problems? We need your help, and we're open to any options you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Capella. Loretta Meloncon. Did I pronounce your name correct, Ms. Meloncon?
That was really done well.
Thank you.
It's Malasaw. It's a Cajun-French name. I live here in Monroe, 2923 Meadow Creek Lane, and I am here to say thank you. Some of the people whom I owe thanks to are not here today. I want to speak to the 2050 visioning, which I was part of on the Environmental Committee, and I've been waiting, waiting for the time when the commissioners would be ready to implement some of those visions and some of those recommendations. And on the litter task force, which has been proposed, I see that's going to be discussed, I hope, in detail, and some good decisions made on the 19th of February. Meanwhile, I want to really give Bjorn Hansen a tremendous pat on the back. His leadership over the whole process and with my Environmental Committee was outstanding, and I appreciate him and everyone else that served on that committee so very much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Jen Sanders.
Hi, Board. Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. I just wanted to stop by and say that I really appreciate the board addressing the library policy issues and changes and reworking of the policy. I thought that the discussion was fantastic last time, and I think that when we discuss things openly, it really helps educate the public, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. There was just something that I just wanted to bring up about. I had emailed everyone about this. So there are many organizations that take advantage of privacy. So one of the recommendations was keeping the rooms, if an organization wanted to use a room. So I'm going to go through a couple ideas. So AA or Al-Anon or PFLAG or sexual abuse organizations, groups that talk. Organizations like that, the privacy issues where you feel safe going into an AA meeting and talking about, you know, important stuff, self-reflection kind of things. It's just that I think with the policy changes, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction, but leaving the ability to have some of the meetings to be a little bit more private. And a workaround could be, you know, when you come to fill out the forms, that you, you know, meet the person, figure out what the organization's about, just some ways that we could give them the privacy and yet still be transparent in using the rooms. And then other organizations like the NAACP, they have memberships where we pay fees, and those meetings are closed because we pay fees for those, things like that. I think if, one of the suggestions or thoughts that I had was that after you sit and talk with leadership, that maybe if Mr. Matthews wanted to come in and say hello and just kind of meet the room a little bit, or any board member at that, just a way to give the community members the safety to know that they have a safe space, which is really important, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. In December of 2022, Commissioner Melissa Merrill was elected vice chair of this board. She served in that role until August of 2023, when with the untimely death of Commission Chairman Stoney Russian, she became, for all intents and purposes, the chairman of the board, and she served in that role until December of 2023. We have a little plaque here tonight in honor of her. We want to present to her. So Commissioner Merrill, if you would step up front, and we'll present this to you. really was going through a lot with the death of Chairman Russian, and she stepped into that role and did a great job, and we appreciate all that she's done for this board. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any revisions requested to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we move item 24-016. That is Capital Project Ordinance, CPO for Union County Jail land purchase, to the business section of our agenda tonight.
Okay. Vice Chairman Brian Helms makes the motion that we move item number 24016 to the business agenda for the night. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now let's vote again on the consent agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda as amended? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, well, we just approved the consent agenda. We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24009, text amendment to Section 35.030 of UDO, accessory dwelling units. I recognize Lee Jensen, Planning Director for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner Matthews. I'll be brief tonight. We conducted a public hearing for this item at the December 18th meeting. But just a little bit of background on this. This is regarding accessory dwelling units in the county. Essentially, an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller house that may sit behind the primary house on the property. Current language in the UDO only allows ADUs in districts where two-family homes or duplexes are allowed. There's three, or yeah, there's three districts where, or there's one district where duplexes are not allowed at all. That's RA 200. And then there's two districts where ADUs are allowed with special use permit. That's R 40 and R 10. As a result of the way the language is written, ADUs are not allowed in those three zoning districts. The only way to really permit an ADU if your property's zoned in one of those three districts is to try to seek a rezoning request. We have 10 zoning districts in the county. RA 200 and R 10 are relatively small. I think RA 200, there might be two districts, and R 10, there's not very many. R 40 is probably the largest. The majority of that area is over on the western side of the county, Marvin, Waxall, Weddington. Most of the areas have been annexed, but there are still spots of R 40 around there. There's also a little bit of R 40 a little bit south of Monroe, just to give you some perspective. I think if you take all the other seven zoning districts, they add up to slightly over 90% of the unincorporated portion of Union County. The proposed change is essentially to allow ADUs by right in all zoning districts. Occasionally, we get folks that come into the office that want to, they have an R 40 piece of property, and they want to be able to have an ADU for a parent or a child. It's not limited to that, but that's typically what the requests are for. Of course, in those R 40 districts, they can't have those. The other change would be to no longer require the 150% minimum lot size requirement. Essentially, you just have to meet the minimum lot size requirement for that district. So if you have an R 40 lot, you can have an ADU, as long as you have the primary structure, primary house on the property. HOAs can still regulate them. They still have to meet building code requirements. So you still have to get a building permit and a zoning permit to make sure that it meets all the standards outlined in the UDO and the North Carolina Building Code. If they're on a septic system, environmental health still has to evaluate the property to make sure that the existing system will still function, or if they have to upgrade the system. And the Union County Land Use Board, at their meeting, I think in November, unanimously recommended approving the amendment. I think a question came up last time. I know I talked about environmental health, but I think a question came up about sewer, and I believe, Brian, the, it's not a huge, it's like building an addition onto your house, like building a bedroom addition onto your house. So it's not a huge impact to sewer. As you can see, these are the actual changes. That's just those two areas under A and E. The rest, B, C, and D kind of outline the standards for what an ADU has to meet for zoning. Essentially, it can only be half the size of the principal dwelling unit. So if you have a 2,000-square-foot house, your ADU can only be 1,000 square feet. So you're limited in size. That's just a breakdown, just to visually show. They're not allowed in RA 200, R 40, and R 10. This would just provide some more flexibility for homeowners that maybe want to build a, an accessory dwelling unit on their property. You know, I talked about the ADUs are already allowed in the vast majority of the county, in the unincorporated portion of the county. They would also help a little bit with affordable housing. That's what we hear folks that want to do if they have a kid that's moving back home, and they can't afford to buy a house yet. They may want to have an ADU in their backyard. And I'll be happy to take any, there were a few questions last time, but I'll be happy to answer any more.
Mr. Chair, Lee, would you talk about the standards for some of the smaller lots? So I think we have an impervious surface.
Yeah, that's a good point. So on the smaller lots, ADUs are, with the exception of R 10, ADUs are allowed today. However, the county has some impervious surface requirements. So on those really small lots, like the R 4, the R 6, and the R 8, you likely, and I say likely because there's always an exception to the rule, but you likely would not be able to even build an ADU because you're going to cap out your impervious surface requirement. Anytime we have a subdivision, we don't have many, but we do have a few that are, you know, R 4, R 6. We keep a spreadsheet that essentially shows how much impervious surface is being permitted, and anytime somebody comes back and permits an accessory, like a storage building or something like that, we have to go back and kind of revisit it. And a lot of times on those lots, we have to tell people, you know, you can't have that shed in your backyard because you're already up against that impervious surface requirement. Thank you for bringing that up, Brian.
And Director Jensen, how many RA 200, is that a small number?
It is a very small number. That was a district that was created in 2014 when we drafted the new UDO. The real reason for the RA 200 was to allow residents some flexibility in exchange for larger lots. So RA 200 equates to like four, four-and-a-half acres, something like that. So it didn't exist before 2014. So the only, I think there's two on the ground. They were rezoning requests. One was the Site B, and the other was actually across the creek from Site B. That was a rezoning to allow, there was a house and a business use on the property. It's 90 acres, so it was kind of a trade-off in allowing some business use on the property and larger lot sizes, really to kind of preserve rural character in some of those areas. So to answer your question, I think there's two.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Director Jensen?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lee, you say that other than these three zoning types, RA 200, R 40, and R 10, ADUs are allowed in all other zonings?
Yes, sir.
Types. But that's only in districts where you have duplexes permitted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the more sweeping change in this text amendment is removing that requirement?
Removing the requirement.
For duplexes.
No, you still, so duplexes are a separate category under the use table. You would essentially be eliminating, if you look at A, it essentially says you can do those in all, and I misspoke. They're not allowed in all, this change wouldn't allow it in all districts, it's all residential zoning districts, so.
Okay.
I should.
Whether or not they're permitted duplexes.
Correct. We're just changing the reference to say if a duplex is allowed, you can have an ADU. This essentially says you can have ADUs in all residential districts.
So that's a pretty sweeping change, then.
You still wouldn't be able to have duplexes in all residential districts.
Right, right. But ADUs would be permitted in all residential zoning districts, whereas currently, they are pretty restricted, because if you're not, if you don't permit a duplex, then you can't have an ADU.
Correct. You can have duplexes, I think, in seven of the 10 zoning districts right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned with some of the details, because if I, do I have to, it can be zoned R 40.
Yes.
But be limited on space. I mean, R 40 is an option, but the land itself determines how much, where we can put a house.
I'm not sure I'm following the question.
Well, I mean, I guess if I've got a ravine right behind my house in an R 40, I'm limited. But you don't have anything to cover. The diff, now, I had a child at home. They lived with me instead of going to build an auxiliary unit. I had a mother-in-law live with me. I didn't build a thing. So why is that not an option for people? I've been in neighborhoods where they built auxiliary units before you were authorized.
Mm-hmm.
And it depends on your neighborhood.
Sure.
Because, you know, you take some of these neighborhoods that have a minimum of an acre, and you put two houses on it. You know, I cannot support this. I mean, I don't have enough details to explain how people can come into an established community and build additional structures that is not consistent with the neighborhood.
Well, an HOA could still regulate it. So if a neighborhood did not want to permit an ADU, we're not going to tell that neighborhood, you have to allow ADUs. HOAs could still regulate it. And you're right. So you could today, in an RA 40 district, if you wanted to build a bedroom addition onto your house for a child to stay in, that'd be fine. You could do that today, no problem. You could do that in every single zoning district in unincorporated Union County. What you can't do is have a separate dwelling unit, which would be a bedroom, a bathroom, and a kitchen.
A tiny house.
Right, a tiny, yeah, there's a thousand different names for it. So you couldn't do that today, but you could certainly go and build an addition onto your house. I've seen people, to be honest with you, they'll build a storage building, and you'll have a big room and a bathroom in it, and then we get a call from the neighbor, they've gone in there and illegally, you know, done something, or, you know, we have to tell them, you guys can't do that. Or, a lot of times, a lot of times, you can make it work, rip something out, or, you know, it might be legal, and they just have to get the proper permits. But yes, we see people do various things in our office all the time.
Mr. Chairman, will you finish that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Lee, the way I understand this change is that this would support a mother-in-law suite. This would support someone putting a living space over a garage, per se. And I think that, so I support this change, first and foremost, and I And I, I think that, so I support this change, first and foremost, and I will be in support of this change because I do believe that this provides landowners flexibility. I don't understand why it is that, that we only have three zoning groups that are excluded from this currently. I think it would be more simple, and as I understand it too, this is a staff recommendation, correct? This was, this derived from staff. So it wasn't from, say, an outside source, you know, coming to staff and saying, okay, hey, I think we should do this. This is something that our staff put their heads together about and then brought to, well, the land use board and then us, correct?
We, we did, yes. And, and the reason we did it, we, we had a lot of residents in those areas that, that would come to us and, and ask, can we have, can we build an ADU? And a lot of those in R 40, we had to say, well, no, you can't. And that, that was really the, the reason because we, we had sort of two, two thought processes. Well, do we, everybody that wants to do it, do we route them through a rezoning process, which may not be, you know, it may be spot zoning because you may have a, you know, you may have this huge R 40 district, Jason's looking at me like, don't, don't say that, but you have this huge R 40 district and, you know, you're going to rezone to some small other district right in the middle of it, just to have an ADU. So we didn't think that was really the right way to, to go about doing it, to have every, every single person that wanted to do that try to go through a rezoning process. So, 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 yeah, so we, we sort of looked at it and said, well, I think this, we thought this was the best path.
And, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So one of the things, and obviously, you know, everyone has their, you know, their viewpoint and the way you look at it. I think when staff looked at this, the perspective was that it's already allowed in 70% of our zoning districts, residential zoning districts. The vast majority of the units are actually not individual houses that are built. They, they really are a garage apartment. They're, they're not necessarily building a new house. They're taking a garage and converting it into a, an apartment or whatever. It doesn't mean they can't build a house. They certainly could under the, the standards. But the reality is, is we had multiple situations where you would have R 40 in one area and R 20 adjacent to it. And you can do it in R 20, but you can't do it in R 40, which is right next to it. And there was really no logic as to why it was allowed in one district versus another district. So again, it's, it's really a perspective, how the Boyd's philosophy is of it. Staff just felt like it, there was really no rhyme or reason as to why those three districts really were not allowed, and that's why we brought it forward.
And, you know, I mentioned this, I think, at our last meeting, but I spent some time with our inspections folks, and, and some of the things that I got to see was inspections on exactly what we're talking about here, so ADUs. Very impressed with, with, with our folks here, what they were having to enforce. There's a lot that really goes into that that I don't think a lot of people understand or see in regards to compliance with our building codes here in, in the state of North Carolina. And so there is a lot that goes into this. It's not like you're just throwing something up made of, you know, sticks and mud and putting a bathroom in there. It, it is much more entailed than that. And, and then on top of that, you've also got HOA, you know, on a lot of these areas that is going to regulate what a structure can look like, what a structure can be, you know, in these neighborhoods. So to me, I, I think this is probably a good idea, and I will be in support of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richard Helms.
Is there any description in there, for example, that it's got to be similar architect to the prime residence or out of same materials? Or can I go put a, basically a storage shed with plywood siding?
In, in North Carolina, you can't regulate, you can't have design standards for residential buildings. That's not allowed. You can possibly do it through conditional rezonings, but in general, that's, you can't do it. What I will say is, these have to meet North Carolina Building Code. So you can't just, I don't know if a storage building would meet the code for a house. I'm assuming there's some different things they'd have to do as far as plumbing, probably some wiring issues that they would have to correct, but, but it does have to meet North Carolina Building Code. So it can't be, it can't be an RV, it can't be, you know, anything like that.
To your point, Commissioner Helms, the nature, the HOA, if they had an HOA, would have to regulate that. Unfortunately, it would fall to the HOA to regulate any design requirements.
Any further comments or questions for Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Chair, I would, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the ordinance approving the text amendments to Section 35.030 of the Unified Development Ordinance of Union County, North Carolina, quote, UDO, and two, adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for approval. That consistency and reasonable statement is as follows. Pursuant to North Carolina GS 160D-605, the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby find and determine that adoption of the proposed text amendments to Section 35.030 of the UDO is consistent with the currently adopted Union County Comprehensive Plan. That adoption of the proposed text amendments is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed text amendments provide flexibility for landowners seeking to provide housing for an aging parent, grown child, or other person, thereby providing an additional housing option in certain zoning districts. This is consistent with the plan's conclusion that residential housing options are needed in the county. And two, the proposed text amendments eliminate differences between similar zoning districts. And three, the proposed text amendments increase opportunities for affordable housing.
That's Vice Chairman Helms' motion. All in favor of the motion?
Are we going to have some discussion, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will not be supporting this motion. This is a pretty sweeping change to our development ordinance. I mean, we've been told that, well, this is already permitted, ADUs are already permitted in 70% of the zoning districts. But again, that's only in zoning districts where duplexes are permitted. So these are zoning districts that are basically rental in nature, largely rental in nature. And with this change, they would be, ADUs would be permitted by right in all residential zoning districts. So it's a pretty sweeping change. And I'll also note that, you know, the developer lobby, which is, you know, pretty powerful in North Carolina, pretty much every legislative session, you know, they push a bill to try to require statewide by right ADUs in residential districts throughout North Carolina. And this past session was no exception. They had, the House, I think, had House Bill 409 that they drafted and tried to pass, and it didn't become law. So I say, let's not, you know, do for the builder lobby what they're, you know, trying to jam down everybody's throat statewide. If they really want to do this, let's have them try to do it statewide. But I think, I think there are a number of other serious problems with this. I mean, there are neighborhoods where, you know, the character of the neighborhoods are honestly changing, you know, where you have a less and less proportion of owner-occupied houses and more and more renters in neighborhoods. And I, I see this as only accelerating that, that trend. So I think we have to think about the kind of communities that we, that we want to live in. Also, unless I'm mistaken, I believe these ADUs, when they're, when they're built, they don't add to our obligated sewer flows. They only factor in once the actual flows are actually moving through our, our sewer system. And in a, in a county where we've got capacity constraints in terms of sewer, I think it's problematic that we just allow this by right in all residential districts without any addition to our obligated flows. So we just have to wait and see, you know, what the impact's going to be when the actual flows happen. I think parking is an issue. In many neighborhoods without ADUs, you know, I see plenty of parking issues. This is only going to make, I think, that problem, you know, more, more pronounced. So I, you know, I, I just, I, I think there are a lot of problems with this change, and I just, I won't be able to support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so just to sort of piggyback on Commissioner Williams' comments there, so as far as the builders lobby, I'm not making this motion to support the builders lobby. I'm making this motion to support an issue of fairness that we have in our county. We heard from our county manager about scenarios where, you know, you could have one neighbor that would be able to do this, and then you have another neighbor that could not. I believe that the sewer flows, the impact to our sewer flows are going to be minimal at best. There is no difference between someone building this apart of an attached structure, an attached home, or putting it three feet away from it, in my opinion. So again, I will be in support of the motion.
Commissioner Richard Helms.
Yeah, I guess you bring up a good point because you take a development, they're protected if they're in an HOA. I'm not a fan of HOAs. However, there are a lot of very nice neighborhoods around that people chose to put their home because of the layout, the houses around them, and everything like that. One individual can destroy that for those persons. They don't have a voice in it. And so we need, we need to be careful. We could be opening up Pandora's Box because is there, is there a clause that says you can't rent this UDO? There's not. So we can build rentals behind every house we have in some of these neighborhoods. That doesn't sound good.
Mr. Chairman. Lee, is there a clause that suggests that you can't rent a bedroom out of an existing structure, say like a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house?
No, sir.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jensen, how long, how long has it been worded as it currently is? Do you know?
I think, yeah, since 2014, with the exception of the amendment that you see on here that was done in 2015. And that, that was really, I think that was the amendment to change to, to lower the size requirement down to, it could be more than 50% of the size of the primary structure.
Thanks, sir. Any further discussion? All right. The motion's been made by Vice Chairman Helms. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Earlier on the agenda, I presented a plaque to Commissioner Merrill, and after pictures and in my haste, I did not give her a chance to speak. Now, I don't want to put you on the spot, ma'am, but I'm going to let you speak, and I apologize for not allowing you to speak earlier, if you want to.
Not going to say much, just it, it was my, my honor to step up after Commissioner Rushing's passing and work closely with staff and, and this board, and, and I'm very thankful for, for the opportunity to do that and to serve in his absence. And thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Merrill. Next on the agenda is item 2385274, express bus service funding for year 2025. I'll recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner, for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. This is an update on an item that you decided on about six months ago regarding the express bus service that previously ran from Monroe and Indian Trail to Uptown Charlotte. Currently, it runs from Indian Trail to Uptown Charlotte. It's been in operation for nearly 20 years, and there's currently two round trips in the morning and evening. And ridership has stabilized after the depths of COVID and has been recovering slightly in the past year. The service went through a study at your direction about 18 months ago to identify whether we should continue the service and if there were alternate services that should be provided, and to see if the municipality, specifically Monroe and Indian Trail, would be willing to help pay for the service. The short story is that Monroe declined and Indian Trail accepted, and so the service was continued. We're now at a point where we have to enter into new contracts for FY '25 for the service, and we had initiated a inter-local agreement with Indian Trail for both this year, which they already committed to, and next year because the service actually requires five months' notice with CATS to be able to cancel it. So in order to make a good decision, we have to make a decision in the month of January to have it take effect for the fiscal year. So we created our inter-local agreement based on that assumption for Indian Trail to be able to participate as well. Well, their response was, we don't go through the budgeting process until later in the fiscal year, so we can't commit to that next year, which puts us in a bind because we have to decide whether we want the service in FY '25, but we have to go on their word, based on their manager, conversations we've had with them over the last six weeks, that they're comfortable at the, at the county, or at the town council level, that they'll put the money in their budget for the next fiscal year, but they can't make that decision until likely May. So this is the timeline of what's happened since last summer. I will say that we've, between the town, the county, and CATS, we've engaged in some pretty robust public outreach, which was a criticism of the service previously. I think it's justified. Ridership has gone up recently, but ridership's gone up across the board for CATS. So I think it would have happened anyway, but I think it's been pretty strong. And so the, really the question for the county commissioners are whether you want to go on Indian Trail's word that they'll put this in the budget for next year and will continue the service, or whether this uncertainty is unacceptable and you should think about it and bring it back in a couple of weeks for a decision. And I, I would really advise you to bring it back in a couple of weeks because of criticism last year of how the decision-making process was, was the riders were not adequately informed. And so they came kind of late in the process. So if this was something you did want to deliberate in two weeks, we would go out and, and alert the riders in person at the stop in Indian Trail that this decision was coming up. So this really is the, the bottom line of what is in front of you, whether you're comfortable with the gentleman's agreement that Indian Trail's put before us for funding it for FY ' '25, or whether this uncertainty is unacceptable and you want to think about canceling the service for FY '25, which would be in two weeks.
And I think, excuse me, Chairman, I'm sorry about that. I think at this point in time, we're really just information only. The board doesn't have to make a decision tonight. We, we certainly can put this on for the 16th, and you can make a decision. What Bjorn is just saying is that we want to make sure we give those riders adequate notice. If they want to come and speak, they can come and speak and, and give you their opinion.
And I spoke with the town manager a few weeks ago, and he was, he's very complimentary of the service, and like Mr. Hansen said, that ridership was up somewhat, so just FYI. Commissioner Merrill?
Yes, can you go back to a couple of previous slides? I want to verify that I understood your data. Go back, yeah, that one. The third bullet down, it says 40 per day?
That's correct.
Forty riders per day, and you have two AM trips and two PM trips.
That's correct.
But, so just, so 40 riders doesn't sound like a whole lot of uptick for me, and it says that ridership plummeted 60% during COVID, and that future ridership is not anticipated to ever get back to that because of people working from home.
That's correct.
So, you know, I just wanted to have that discussion because it's one thing to say that ridership is increasing, but the numbers continue to seem, seem very low, and the prediction is that we'll never get back to the pre-COVID ridership.
That's correct. And ridership had actually been declining pre-COVID for nearly a decade. The peak for transit in the Charlotte region was in the early 2010s.
So thank you very much, but I just wanted, so four trips a day and only approximately 40 riders per day, so I did read that correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jensen, do you know how things changed after, I think they used to have a bus come all the way to Monroe?
That's correct.
After that changed, and now it only goes to Indian Trail, is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Do you know how the numbers changed after that? Do you have any idea?
We only have two months of ridership because the change took effect October 1st, so we do have the data for the months of October, November. They're slightly up, so act, now you can't, you could attribute that to the increased marketing, you could attribute it to people going back to work in person. It's tough to tease that out, but it didn't crater, it didn't go down by half, so that's a positive.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further questions for Mr. Jensen?
Do we need an official motion for direction to bring this back on the 16th?
I think it's okay if we bring it back on the 16th for a decision.
Okay, we'll do so.
All right, the next matter, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Richard Helms.
It also says on the 16th we're going to discuss stormwater and broadband. Will that continue as we planned?
So that's the next item? That's the item that has to do with the comprehensive plan? And Lee is getting ready to go over that one? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The next matter of business is item 24023, Union County Implementation Committee Recommendations. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen, not Jensen, again. I'm sorry, Mr. Hanson.
We are not related. So this is about the comprehensive plan, which is called Union County 2050, and this is something that has been waiting for some time now. The comprehensive plan was adopted in August of 2021. Several issues were identified as needing more research to figure out what the strategies are to address them. This board approved some citizen-led committees for six specific issues. Those committees completed their work in June of 2022, and the planning board made its recommendations in August of 2022. And so the process for any of these strategies was, the committee makes a recommendation, the planning board then reviews it, makes its own recommendation, and then obviously the Board of Commissioners is the ultimate decision-maker whether to approve, amend, or to deny these specific strategies. Now, tonight, we're not talking about approving, or of course you could, but we're not asking you to approve or deny any of these strategies. What we're asking you is to endorse or approve a process for us to bring them forward to you because there's a lot of information. There are some options on how you could process this. You could approve all of these, all of these strategies. You could approve only what the planning board recommended. You could approve only what the specific committees recommended, or you could go line by line and vote on them, and that's actually what we recommend. It's going to take more time, but we think it's going to result in more informed decision-making about each of these specific strategies. So going off of this recommendation, tonight is where we introduce the situation with the 2050 plan and the specific strategies, or I'm sorry, issues to address. What would happen is in two weeks, the first meeting on the actual content, which Commissioner Helms was referring to, we would talk about stormwater and broadband. The second meeting on February 5th, we'd talk about cluster and open space strategies, as well as any outstanding questions that may come up from the meeting on the 16th of January. Then on February 19th, school siting and litter, as well as any remaining questions from cluster and open space. And then the meeting on March 4th would only occur, the presentation would only occur if there were any remaining questions from you. So this is just format in terms of the types of things you would see in terms of stormwater. We have recommendations. We talk about what the implementation mechanism would look like, how it went through the specific committee, as well as the planning board. Same with broadband internet, could range from just advocacy to developing a plan to implementing a new program. We're going to reference the adopted land use plan, as well as where sewer is expected to be located, or at least was expected to be located through 2050, and how that impacts rural character as development occurs, and that impacts cluster standards, open space in rural areas. A lot of these are text amendments, like what Lee just presented about the ADUs. That's where most of the teeth comes in for the land use plan implementation, so a lot of these standards would be found in that document as well. Then school siting, and this isn't about public or private or charter schools, this is schools across the board regarding school siting. And again, these could be amendments to the UDO, could be advocacy, and then the litter task force, which gets into a range of strategies, whether they're new programs, text amendments to create new committees, or add staff. So there are some other strategies or issues that have been identified in the 2050 plan that don't come from this process. We just wanted to remind you that there have been strategies that were previously recommended or considered that didn't require additional research, such as well testing for new homes, interstate designation for US 74. Those were both recommended and are in various stages of being implemented. Tying rezonings to completing, completed road widens, that was something that was recommended. The next five strategies were not approved as a part of the plan, but they were presented to you as the Board of Commissioners, a rural water authority for the Union County water system, a quarter cent sales tax referendum to go in front of the voters for either transportation or a combination of transportation and recreation, and then a well-filtered cost share program for unsafe drinking water. So again, to recap, the requested action for you tonight is to endorse a strategy for us to bring all this information to you and how you would evaluate them, either as one big chunk or line by line. That will help us to figure out how the presentation should come back to you in two weeks. So happy to answer any questions that you may have. It's a lot of information, but they're really important, and a lot of, literally dozens of Union County residents gave hours of their time to help create these strategies.
Any questions for Mr. Hansen?
Bjorn, I'd like to ask you to add when you bring back stormwater.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman spoke about flooding on Parker Road. I lived a half mile from there for 20 years, and I may have seen half that much flooding in that 20 years. My phone's ringing out of the hook by communities that have been, that were in place, they built another development above it, and inadequate stormwater has created a problem for them. They're seeing the flood. Can you bring back, because I know y'all are hearing about it too, bring back these developments, especially in Wesley Chapel area, and on top of that, say there was a development built on Providence Road in Weddington, and it flooded an existing community. Now, they were very lucky. The state granted them almost a million dollars to dredge upon because it was filling up. We need to include that in our planning, that future communities downstream are protected as well as the ones that are just.
That's actually one of the strategies that's in this slide, but for each of the presentations, we're going to bring the subject matter experts, so our stormwater engineer, as well as our IT director are going to be present at the meeting on the 16th to help give more content to these specific items, so we'll be sure to do that.
Yeah, the water described tonight is unprecedented in that area.
And it happened several months ago as well.
Yep, so it's not, you know, 500-year occurrence, it's more.
500 years happens a lot more frequently at these.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. When you don't plan, when you're developing above a community, and don't think about the impact on that community downstream, so if you include that in your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
I do also want to remind the board that you did direct us to work with Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail, and I believe it was that area, or very close to that area, to talk about mitigation strategies. They have been meeting with those two towns. They are working on a scope, and they will be bringing that back in the near future. It will require the three jurisdictions to cost share on something. I don't know what that is at this point, but they have been meeting and talking about that, and they'll be bringing something back in the very near future.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we confirm the adoption process presented here, the presentation schedule and format for these 2050 Implementation Committee Recommendations.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. That we confirm the adoption process. Is that what you're looking for?
It is.
Okay. Confirm the adoption process, presentation schedule, and format for the 2050 Implementation Committee Recommendations.
Any discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Williams' motion? Aye?
Aye.
One question. Is the board comfortable with approaching this from a line-by-line approach as recommended by staff? If you are, that way, we'll build the presentation that way. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item number 24019, Final Adjusting Change Order for Sheriff's Administration Building. This is the item that has moved from consent to the business agenda. I'm going to turn it over to County Manager Brian Matthews.
I actually believe it's 16 is the item.
Yes.
That's correct, I'm sorry.
Yes, no problem. So this particular item is an actual procedural motion, a procedural request to move funds to be able to cover the cost of purchase of land. Commissioner Helms did, Brian Helms, have a question and asked that we talk about this in more public, and I believe Commissioner Merrill also brought this up. For the public's knowledge, we have been discussing building a new jail for some period of time. The sheriff has brought forward the need for the expansion, or at least new beds for an expanded jail facility. We've had that discussion. The board is generally supportive of that idea. Obviously, there's, you're going to have to figure out how we finance it and those things, but one of the concerns was where will we put this facility and how will we be able to accommodate it, given what we already have out at the sheriff's office site and jail site. So there was an opportunity to purchase property adjacent to the sheriff's property. Property owner previously, I guess his mother had passed away, they owned it together, so that it became an opportunity. It went on the market. We approached the board about the ability to purchase this property. The board gave us a range to negotiate. We were able to come to an understanding, had an agreement with that property owner. The only thing that was left is really some due diligence on soil testing for that property. We did have that work done, got the results back from the consultant. They did a total of 10 boars. What we found is that the geology and the soil makeup is very similar to what was built for the sheriff's administration building, and we ran into really no soil issues on that, so we were comfortable that there should be no soil issues. Obviously, I want to be careful in that when you actually lay out the building, you still have to do more soil samples, but generally, we believe that we're in good shape when it comes to the soil samples for that. And so the board did give us permission to go ahead and purchase the property. We're in the process of finalizing that contract. It's already been signed by the property owner, just hasn't been executed yet on our end. But in order to pay for it, we'll have to move those funds in order to cover those costs. We've identified some investment dollars from the bonds that went to build this facility, build the jail facility, so we're actually, not the jail, the sheriff's administrative office, so we're using some of those investment dollars to help cover this cost. So that's what this item is, is really the CPO and all of the items in order to move those funds to cover those costs.
Mr. County Manager, the correct title of that would be the Capital Project Ordinance for the Union County Jail Land Purchase, and the number is 24016.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Mr. County Manager, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. I did ask for this item to be taken off of consent and moved to business, just for the spirit of transparency. I felt like it was necessary that we keep the public updated as to what we've been doing with this and what the board has progressed with regarding potential for a new jail site. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, one of the other concerns that we've had, Brian, and maybe you can speak to this, but one of the other concerns we've had is that the current jail facility, there was some question about it being in an existing flood plane. As I understand it, this property here, only a very, very small percentage of the overall parcels that we're attempting to purchase would be located in a flood plane.
That is correct.
Or detrimental to construction.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. I would just share one concern that I would have moving forward with this, assuming that this project goes forward and it is funded. You know, as I understand it, flood planes can move with construction, and we've seen some of that, I think, in development, well, case in point, in Wesley Chapel. I think that, and I'm sure that this would all go into the engineering, but we need to be very, very careful to make sure that we don't repeat those past mistakes.
Yes, sir.
With our existing facility.
Yes, sir. And I would like to make one clarification. It's actually investment income earned from our ARPA dollars, not from the previous project. I've got that twisted. It actually is investment income from our ARPA funds.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. County Manager. It's time for County Manager coming.
Still need a motion on that particular item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt special revenue grant project ordinance, 94B, for ARPA earnings, or ARPA investment earnings, and then to adopt capital project ordinances, CPO 349A, CPO 347A, and CPO 284C.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. County Manager.
I just want to say again, thank you to all the staff for a wonderful year that we had here with the county, and I say calendar year, not a fiscal year. Staff worked very hard over the year. I hope they enjoy themselves for Christmas and the New Year. We look forward to, you know, getting the board together and getting some direction on some upcoming items, so thank you very much.
Commissioner, comments? Commissioner Richard Helms, you start us off, please, sir.
No comments.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank the citizens who spoke during informal comments, Frank Capella, Loretta, our litter queen, and I think Jen Sanders, I think I got that right. So thank you for your comments, they're always welcome. And that's it. Just Happy New Year to all my colleagues and county staff and citizens of Union County.
Commissioner Melissa Merrill.
Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and welcome back.
Vice Chairman Brian Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, well, I would echo the comment from Commissioner Williams. Thank you to all of our folks that came up and spoke in informal comment. Mr. Capella, really appreciate your comments regarding the flooding issue. I would also like to take a minute and personally recognize Commissioner Merrill. Of course, she was recognized here earlier this evening, but I want to thank her for her contributions as our acting chair last year. It wasn't something that she signed up for, and it wasn't something that we ever anticipated, but she took on that challenge, and she led with great integrity and effort, and I'm certainly appreciative of her and her efforts. With that, I'd also like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, praying God's blessings on our county and all of our folks. Thank you.
And I would like to send our sympathies and condolences to the family of former Commissioner Paul Stanridge. Mr. Stanridge served on the Union County Board of Commissioners from 1992 to 2004. He recently passed away. We want to send our prayers for his family. Thanks to all the county staff for the great job they do, for our staff, all the county employees, and thank you for coming tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.